Helping the community, you're helping lots of people. And you're helping animals because you don't want any animals to eat trash. And if they do, they could get really sick. And you need animals to be in the world.
Small kids making a large impact for all of us. I'm Rasha Goel for L.A. this week.
The cleanup was also supported by Councilmember Paul Krikorian's office. While the Asian-American faith-based community is honoring those who improve the quality of life in their neighborhoods, they team up with the L.A. Human Relations Commission's for this awards event. Anna Marcos has more.
Asian-Americans, faith leaders, and the city's Human Relations Commission got together to hand out these community awards. The event shone a spotlight on Asian-Americans making a difference in their faith communities.
And this is the first time that they've had a non-Anglo Asian-American as the moderator for the Presbyterian Church in America. And I think that's breaking barriers, and that's what they wanted to honor me for.
Yeah, I'm getting an award this evening for the work I did when I was lead pastor at Evergreen Baptist Church of Los Angeles to actually make it a welcoming space for Asian-American Christians to identify as LGBTQ.
The awards were the culmination of a three-day summit that touched on faith, race, and economic equality, and much more in the Asian community.
We were talking about the issue of race and how that really affects people on all levels, the quality of their education, the type of housing that they receive, and how they're being treated in different aspects of our society.
Well, this summit is to really equip leaders in our community, particularly with a focus on the Asian community, in building bridges across different sectors. Economically, I think a lot of people are suffering. We have housing issues. We have healthcare issues. We have homelessness.
In this room at least, churches, government, and people, all finding a way to work together to find solutions and honor those who have in a community that often doesn't get a lot of attention. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. this week.
The Human Relations Commission works on issues affecting interracial relations, human rights, equality, homelessness, immigration, battered women, housing, and more. Well, think it's sci-fi? Well, think again. Real technology on land and in the air will drastically change mobility as we know it. Gil Reyes shows us what experts have in store from La Crete's Innovation Campus.
Remember the Jetsons? The cartoon family from the future got around in flying cars, an innovation that may not be too far away.
People will be coming to the airport in flying vehicles, and not airplanes, in their own sort of flying taxis in the not-too-distant future. So within 10 years, for sure.
John Ressant makes the fascinating prediction which could drastically reduce vehicle traffic around traffic-plagued LAX. Ressant is chairman of the New Cities Foundation, a global nonprofit that researches how emerging technologies could impact cities. He and other experts are in downtown for an event called "L.A. Commotion."
Bringing people here together to look at how are we going to move? How are we going to connect? Whether it's goods, whether it's people, what are the cutting-edge technologies? And L.A. has always been brave about embracing those. And how can we work with companies to really suit them to improve the quality of life for all of us?
Mayor Eric Garcetti takes a look at Arquimoto SRKs. These two-seater electric vehicles take up little space, can travel up to 80 miles an hour, and have surprisingly large storage space. They're also called FUVs, the "F" standing for fun. Expect them on the market in 2018. But who needs drivers? Experts say totally autonomous vehicles could be shuttling Angelenos to and from work in a few years. The city's Information Technology Agency wants to be ready.
So part of it is pulling data out of the systems, understanding where people are getting picked up and dropped off, whether Uber or Lyft rides, being able to understand how people are using curb space differently.
Fewer traditional cars on the road could reduce pollution and free up space for more housing and parks. So it's time to embrace the not-so-distant future. The time to get ready is now. From La Crete's Innovation Campus in downtown's Arts District, I'm Gil Reyes for L.A. this week.
By the way, the sticker price for one of those SRKs is around $12,000. Well, Angelenos pitched in for a day to run, walk, and raise money to help those who are homeless. Anna Marcos takes us to the Homewalk event through city streets, a joint effort between the city and the United Way of Greater Los Angeles.
Plenty of colorful characters around to kick off the 11th Annual Homewalk in downtown L.A. Runners and walkers of all shapes and sizes burst out of the starting line as the five-kilometer run-and-walk event hit the road. Some of them quite noisy. Others just curious and friendly. Families, groups, people with baby buggies, people and their dogs, and kids, lots of kids. All hoping it for a good cause, ending homelessness in L.A.
Since we work and live in U.S.A., this is an important cause for us. We see homeless every day.
It was a great cause to be able to go through L.A., to see all of it, and also go past some of the people that are impacted by this cause.
Some advocate for the homeless not just on this day, but every day, like this guy.
I once was homeless myself, me and my son. You know, I wasn't always homeless. I had a job. I worked nine-to-five like everybody else. The company I worked for went out of business, and I found myself homeless.
Apparently, there were teams, all working to raise money for their run. Team Garcetti raised a hefty $10,000, but SoCal Gas pulled out all the stops, raising a whopping $108,000.
You can say yes to ending homelessness in Los Angeles. Can you say yes? One, two, three, yeah!
Keep on running, keep on walking.
Yep, we think pretty much everyone was saying yes at this homewalk event. Angelenos have also been saying yes over the past year, as they voted in Prop HHH and Measure H, two laws that will tax L.A. voters to help pay for building homeless housing.
You opened your hearts, you opened your wallets, and you said in no uncertain terms that we will end homelessness in Los Angeles.
But it wasn't all sweat and good deeds. Everyone who crossed the finish line got a medal, as these happy faces show. And then it was time to let loose at all the fun events. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. this week.
The Homewalk event raised more than $1 million in one day for homeless housing. While the city welcomes another permanent housing complex for homeless veterans, Bike Share comes to Griffith Park, and South L.A. residents celebrate a new park in their neighborhood. All these stories in City B. Mayor Eric Garcetti joined other city and county officials at the grand opening of Silver Star Apartments, a permanent supportive housing complex for homeless veterans. The 49-unit development is the first zero-net-energy, multifamily, affordable housing project in L.A. This affordable development is also the first permitted system for indoor gray water reuse in L.A. and is estimated to save over half a million gallons of water per year. The Housing Authority of the City of Los Angeles has committed $10.5 million in housing assistance payments over the next 15 years. The City of Los Angeles Department of Rec and Parks is working with OFO, a bike-share company, to give visitors to Griffith Park a new, easy, and fun way of getting around. With thousands of visitors coming to Griffith Park daily, officials say Bike Share is convenient, affordable, and hassle-free. Riders simply download the OFO mobile app and scan a QR code on the license plate to unlock a bike. Once you download the app, a map in the app shows the location of nearby bikes. When the trip is over, riders can park anywhere in compliance with local laws. The trip costs $1 per hour. The Department of Rec and Parks, along with Councilmember Marquise Harris-Dawson, celebrated the grand opening of Vermont Miracle Park. The property, located in the South Los Angeles region, has been transformed into a new green space developed through a community-led plan. Amendments include bright-colored playground, adult fitness equipment, drought-tolerant landscaping, and sustainable design elements. Vermont Miracle Park is number 39 of the city's 50 Parks Initiative program, designed to address park disparity across the city. The park will provide new recreational opportunities for youth and their families in a community that lacks green space. Well, who doesn't want to be well-groomed? Well, thanks to a program started by a young girl and the city, homeless individuals recently had the chance to enjoy some pampering. Rasha Goel has more.
At the age of 10, Chloe Thompson is the CEO of her nonprofit Chloe Cares. Her mission: to support the homeless community and motivate other kids to be the change in their community. And she recently partnered with the city's Department of Recreation and Parks to bring free grooming services to those in need.
We're here at Gladys Park in Skid Row, and we have cuts in the park. And this was actually an idea of this young lady right here.
I just thought it would be great to give people who need haircuts to have haircuts, and also gift to have them to take showers. And it's just what I really wanted for them to take.
Services included free haircuts, showers, shaves, resource booths, giveaways, and much more.
They're good. They're good to go. They know what they're doing.
With homelessness in the park becoming an issue, the Department of Recreation and Parks felt it was necessary to provide basic hygiene services to help improve public safety.
They're taking their hard-earned money, and they showing us love is what we showing them love, you know what I'm saying? It's a beautiful thing.
For many here, a beautiful gift created by a young humanitarian mind. I'm Rasha Goel for L.A. this week.
Chloe Cares was started by Chloe Thompson in 2015. Well, a Disney classic tells the tale as old as time. Kick off the holiday season by hitting the ice rink, or enjoy a community parade in Echo Park. All this in this week's Things to Do. Casa 0101 Theater and TNH Productions, in association with L.A. Councilmember Gil Sadio, are proud to present Disney's Beauty and the Beast. This classic story follows Belle, a young woman in a provincial town, and the Beast, who is really a young prince trapped in a spell placed by an enchantress. If the Beast can learn to love and be loved, the curse will end, and he will be transformed to his former self. But time is running out. If the Beast does not learn his lesson soon, he and his household will be doomed for all eternity. The play starts December 8th and runs until January 21st at Casa 0101 Theater, located at 2102 East First Street. For more, visit casa0101.org. You gotta have some fun on the ice this winter season, so strap on your skates or rent some and hit the Pershing Square Ice Rink. The 7,200-square-foot rink will be open through January 15th, and more than 50,000 people are expected to strap on the blades during the two-month run. Lots of events are planned on the ice that'll sure to keep the whole family entertained. For a list of events, go to holidayicrinkdowntownla.com. It's the season of parades, and Echo Park is hosting its annual community parade along Sunset Boulevard between Vin Scully Avenue to Park Avenue. Thousands of residents from Echo Park and surrounding neighborhoods sit on the sidelines to watch the 50 more parade entries, including Santa, celebrate the holiday season. This year's parade theme is Golden Memories of Echo Park, and it takes place Saturday, December 9th, from 11:00 to 2:00 p.m. For more, visit echo park community parade dot com. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kane from all of us here at L.A. this week. Thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at la city view dot org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of L.A. this week.
Okay, good morning, everyone. Good morning. Please take your seat. Welcome. Welcome to the Los Angeles City Council. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. Public is welcome. Madam Clerk, we do have a quorum. Call a roll.
Bloomingfeld, Bonin, Buscayino, Sadio, Englander, Harris-Dawson, Weezer, Corretts, Krikorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Wesson. Eleven members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay, first order of business.
Approval the minutes.
Mr. Krikorian moves, and O'Farrell seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Martinez moves, and Bonin seconds. Continue.
Mr. President, there are requests to receive and file Item 1H inasmuch as the lien was rescinded. Receive and file Items 1F, G, and K inasmuch as the liens were paid in full. There are also requests to continue Item 1D to March 23rd, 2018. Item 1J continue to January 9th, 2018. There is a request to continue Item 4 to January 12th, 2018. Continue Item 11 to December 12th, 2017. And for the record, subsequent to when the agenda was released, a time limit extension was granted for Item 40. The last day for council action is now December 13th, 2017. And finally, Mr. President, there is a request to continue Item 40 to Tuesday, December 12th.
Without objection, so ordered. Continue.
Items 1 through 4 are items noted for public hearing.
Do you...oh, Mr. O'Farrell.
Please continue Item 2 until January...sorry, February 16th.
Okay, so without objection, so ordered. So if we could continue going through the agenda?
Mr. President, there are cards on the remainder of the items, sir.
Okay, so that'll bring us where?
That brings council to Items 5 through 24, and those are items which public hearings have been held. Committee reports for Items 11, 18, 20, 21, 22, 23, and 24 have been submitted and circulated for council consideration. Again, Item 11 was continued to December 12th. And finally, sir, Item 19 and 25 are related. Item 19 needs to be held on the desk and voted together with Item 25, sir.
Okay, let's do that. Now let's prepare Mr. Krikorian.
I'd like to call Item 10 special, please.
10 for Mr. Krikorian, Mr. Bloomingfield.
I'd like to call Item 24 special.
24 for Mr. Bloomingfield, Mr. Harris-Dawson.
Mr. Weezer, Items 19, 20, 33, and 41, special.
Could you repeat those?
19, 20, 33, 41.
Okay, Mr. Englander.
29, special, please.
29. So let's hold those items, and let's prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
Continue.
Items 25 through 30-
Items 25 through 39 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, Mr. O'Farrell.
President, thank you. Please refer Item 27 back to Arts, Entertainment, Parks, and River Committee. Item 27.
Okay, well, let's get those items in the queue so we can deal with them. So those items are now before us. Mr. O'Farrell has a request that Item 20...
27, yeah.
...be referred.
Arts, Entertainment, Parks, and River Committee.
Okay. Let's prepare...
Mr. President, there are cards on the rest, sir.
Okay, then, continue.
That brings council to the continuation agenda, and Items 40 and 41 are items which public hearings have been held.
Okay, specials. I don't see any. Let's prepare to vote on these items. Wait a minute, it's... Didn't we have one of these items continued?
Yes, sir. So, Item 40 was continued. So council may vote on Item 41, sir.
Okay, I think we made a request to hold that item. So that now brings us to what?
That brings council to presentations, items called special, and public comments, sir.
Ms. Martinez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I'd like us to welcome this morning. We have a group of students from Anadale Valley High School, from Lancaster. Can you please stand up to be recognized?
Give him a round of applause.
Welcome to the Los Angeles City Council. And with them this morning is Principal Nahar. Where are you? There he is. We graduated from high school, back at San Fernando High School in 1991. Go Tigers! Thank you very much for being here and witnessing policymakers do their work every day. And they're going to get a tour from City Hall, but I wanted to recognize them. Thank you for being here.
Okay. Before we get started on our presentations, I'm going to start this council off with a blast. I'm going to take two general public comment cards. I'd like to have Chad and JT come forward.
All right.
L.A.'s version of Bill and Ted, please come forward. Identify yourself.
What up, council? My name is Chad Kroger. I'm here speaking on the ordinance of keeping parties in L.A. I spoke on Wednesday, but I didn't get to finish my speech, so I thought I'd finish it here and then just let you dudes connect the dots. So, raging at house parties is the truest way to party. I've tried to party at clubs, but they're polluted by fedoras and venix. And honestly, it's almost impossible to let loose with such bad vibes. Plus, I'm on my parents' allowance, and I can't afford bottle service. So if you guys go through with this, I'll be really screwed. Please don't do this. In America, we always talk about freedom, but what do we mean by that? Well, to me, freedom is rocking a fresh ruka tank in the warm sun while playing beer pong with your boys. What good is bronzing if you can't do it with your squad? Moments like those bring about epic serendipity, like the time I met Strider's sister Tiffany, and we really connected. Strider was pissed, but eventually got over it.
Thank you.
Please...
Thank...
Damn... All right, thank you.
Thank you. Next.
What up, council? I was also here on Wednesday, and it was super chill, and I've rolled back with a renewed vigor. I have never believed more strongly that parties are what's needed to unite the United States of America. I'd like to share an anecdote. Chad and I were not always super tight bros. We were star-crossed. He was a surfer, I was a bodyboarder. We operated in different worlds. Chad went out... We both went to this party at Benji's, and it looked like it was going to be a serious flop. His dad wouldn't bail, and the guy-to-girl ratio was awful. Chad went out to his F-250 and brought back his four-hose beer bong. He and Kellen and Reese and Landon were going to drink it, but Landon couldn't because he was on antibiotics. After some ribbing, he bailed, and Chad asked me to step in. It was touching. We chugged a sixer of Bud Diesel out of the beer bong. In that moment, I felt so close to him. I think if America could just take a moment to stop and chug, they could feel that, too.
Thank you. All right. So we will continue our general public comment later. Mr. Englander, if you could come up here for two seconds. We'll start off with our presentation. I believe the first one is mine.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, if I can turn your attention to the podium, we've got a very special presentation by Council President Herb Wesson. Let's give him a round of applause as he makes his way to the podium.
Thank you. Thank you, H. Chief. Today is one of those special days. Today is one of those days that we can just do something that makes us all feel good. So today is Pet Adoption Friday, and we have with us today two stars. One has four legs, and that is Haley, correct?
Yes.
So Haley is about four years old, and she is a terrier mix. She was a stray, and she's ha... She's gonna just lay. I wish we could get this shot. She's just laying... There it is, on the podium here. But we have had Pet Adoption Fridays for about 12 years. And in the city of Los Angeles, we have a 100 percent... Oh, God, adoption rate. Let's give Haley a round of applause. She's about as cute as she can be. And Haley is looking for a home. Here, I want... You see, I want you to hold her. Make sure we get that money shot, right? Anyway, so Haley is looking for a home. Like I said, she's a terrier mix, about four years old. If you ever want unconditional love, trust me, you get that in a companion animal. So again, the city's proud. We have a 100 percent adoption rate, where it relates to our dogs, and we want to keep that adoption rate alive. So I am presenting Haley before this council and everybody in this building. We're going to ask that you stay a little bit, and hopefully, there'll be an owner out there that'll come down in the back and provide Haley with the type of home that she wants, she needs, and definitely deserves. Members, when you adopt one of our pets, you're doing more than just creating a relationship between you and the pet. You're actually helping us save lives. So I'm urging anyone in this building, anyone in this council, that would like to take... Is she ready to go home today?
Yes, she is.
She is... That means she has her shots. She's ready to go. Please, we're going to have her in the back. Her name is Haley, four years old. If you're watching us on television, you have an interest, call 888-452-7381. Again, if you are looking for unconditional love, I mean, all you have to do is look in that face, and you can definitely see the potential for it. So, Mr. President, members, thank you for giving me a few minutes to try to find Haley a place to live. Anyway, thank you.
So I couldn't help but notice Chief Tarazza's been eyeballing Haley since she walked in. You know, he's been through a lot this week, and he needs some companionship. The holidays are coming. And, you know, you can't have a fire chief without a dog. I mean, it just...
Well...
Well, you can put some white spots on it, I think.
Because of that tear-jerking story that Mr. Englander just said, every council's going to put in $7.50. We're going to chip it in, and, Chief, we're going to give you Haley. So you can put her on the back of the fire truck. So, look, if anybody... And I'm urging you, and this is serious. Let's... We have six shelters, so I don't want you to be frustrated if you want to get Haley, and she's gone. But please, don't lose sight of the fact that whenever we get a dog, or a cat, or any kind of other animal adopted, we are saving lives. So let's make sure we save Haley's life today. Call 888-452-7381. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you very much. Mr. Rue. You just... Oh, you're with me. You want to join me at the podium? Let's do it. All right.
So our next presentation is Mr. Englander and Mr. Rue.
All right. Come here. Colleagues, this is a woman that needs no introduction. In fact, there are few people that I've met that have had such a dramatic impact on the city, on the city family, that aren't even city employees, that do it out of their own time, often on their own dime, that have worked tirelessly and dedicated their lives for our heroes. You know, even our first responders, our police officers and firefighters, they need help, too. They can't do it alone. They certainly can't do it with just our help. So they've got to reach out beyond the departments, beyond the budget, beyond the call of duty to find the funds necessary for added equipment, training, programs. And the person that stepped up to do this, and I think it's fitting today, because we know what we've been going through in the last week. Skirball Fire, the Creek, the Ryde, Thomas Fires, the organizations, the fire department has needed much more. Their major source of private support has been the Fire Foundation, providing funding for those that needed equipment, the last-minute, the things that we just couldn't afford, couldn't buy, non-city essential services, buying washing machines for the turnout equipment, so our firefighters can actually clean their gear, their life-saving apparatus. Karen Wagner has passionately helped our first responders for over 20 years. Before that, she earned a bachelor's in Spanish from UCLA and a master's degree in Portuguese from Wisconsin. Those two critical life-saving languages, Portuguese and raising money here for the Fire Foundation, were critically important. Joking aside, she's devoted her career to organizational development, volunteerism, and most importantly, nonprofit management. She served as the president of Los Angeles Fire Department in 2010. In fact, I remember, I remember getting called by Karen and saying, "We have an idea, and I want you to meet, meet me at Ron Rogers' office over on Sunset Boulevard." Was it on Sunset?
Century Park.
In Century Park, with Lisa was there.
Yep.
And we sat down, and they said, "We wanted to run this idea by you." You know, the police department has had this foundation to raise money for critical equipment needs. And Karen has really been the cornerstone of that. "We want to do that same thing for the fire department." And I looked at Ron, I looked at Karen, I looked down and saw Ron's boots. Remember the boots? Always wore boots. And I didn't need any convincing. I said, "What can I do to help?" And I think Ron looked at Karen, then looked at me, and said, "Just stay out of her way, and we'll get it done." And they have. Karen served as president of the Los Angeles Police Foundation for nearly nine years, developing the foundation from the start to a multimillion-dollar organization, in fact, the largest of its kind. And prior to that, she held the position of executive director for the Volunteer Bureau and the office of the mayor for six years, and oversaw the Los Angeles City volunteer programs, and was actively involved in the development of new programs. She was also a delegate in the Summit for America's Future and served on the California statewide dialogue of service and volunteerism. She's done a lot. Peace Corps, Council of Support for the Organizational Director for the UCLA Alumni Association, and it goes on and on. Let me tell you right now that, having known and worked with Karen... I can't believe you're retiring. She's been the genie behind the magic. And to make sure that we have those critical resources at the most critical times has just been life-saving. She's touched more lives than we'll ever know. She's saved more properties and more lives than anybody can ever quantify. She's helped police officers and firefighters beyond just raising money, but as a friend, and developed those lifelong relationships individually with all of us because of it. And I want to congratulate her and her husband, Tom, her two kids, and her granddaughter, Kaia, who's here as well. If we can give Karen Wagner a round of applause, she deserves so much. And before I turn it over to Nina, who is taking over as the LAFD Foundation, and Ralph Tarazza, I'd like to welcome also Councilmember David Rue, who's joining me in this very special presentation.
Thank you, Councilmember Englander. Thank you, Council President. What a week this has been to honor the Los Angeles Fire Department Foundation. What we've seen from Silmar to Skirball, we've seen just how hard these firefighters work to protect our residents and our communities. They are heroes, plain and simple. But behind the amazing work of the Los Angeles Fire Department are champions like the Los Angeles Fire Department Foundation and Karen Wagner. Karen has been an incredible leader of the LAFD Foundation, supporting the men and women who fight on the front lines of our city every single day. But I'm going to go a little bit further back in history. In 1997, back then, my own district director, Nikki Izari, worked with Karen to establish the very first Adopt a Fire Station program at Fire Station 19 in Brentwood. At the time, local fire stations were having trouble getting needed monies and supplies. Nikki and Karen got to work organizing and fundraising, not only to help the local firefighters, but also creating a real community investment in their local fire station. The program was much a success, which turned eventually to Councilmember Englander's story and to the LAFD Foundation that we know today and has been led by Karen with a passion and focus. Karen was renowned for her kindness and her freshly baked cookies. She and her cookies will be greatly missed at the foundation. But we are also welcome, very excited to welcome Nina Andro, the incoming president, who will continue the great work of the LAFD Foundation to serve the men and the women who keep our city safe. Please make a donation to the LAFD Foundation. They need our support now more than ever. Thank you to Karen and to Nina for leading this foundation and for being here in the most time needed for our L.A. heroes. Thank you.
When Karen told me she was retiring almost a year ago, I started reflecting on all the things she had done, her foundation had done, the money that they had supplied to help us... the money that they had supplied to help us start programs such as Girls Camp, High School Magnets, drones, which we flew for the first time yesterday over the Skirball fire, iPads, our Advanced Provider Response Unit, which we deployed two weeks ago. We call it the SOBER unit in Skid Row. And all of that and much, much more was in part due to Karen's fundraising, her tenacity, and what was said earlier is true. Keep out of her way and good things will happen. I think she's proven that. So Karen, we wish you a long, healthy, happy, prosperous retirement. I know you're not that far away. I have your cell number and I'm not going to hesitate to use it. So thank you on behalf, the men and women of Los Angeles Fire Department. We could not have done the amazing things that they're doing today, as well as other days, without the support of you, the foundation, and your staff. Congratulations.
And I'd like to ask Andrew Kane from the foundation to say a few words as well.
Thank you. I appreciate the city councilors for their comments and the fire chief. I am the chairman of the foundation. You know, when I joined the foundation board about five years ago, the foundation had a mission. His mission was spearheaded by Karen as the founder, along with the founding board and as president. And that was to raise the profile of our Los Angeles Fire Department. For the last three years, I've had the pleasure of chairing the foundation. Here's the story that I think reflects Karen's legacy. All of those resources that we've been able to provide, from the flashlights, the brush helmets, the drones, the whitewater rescue rafts, the support of the magnet programs, iPads, the web-enabled website, all of those wouldn't have happened without all of our sponsors and a very supportive board. But none of those would have really happened without the leadership of Karen. On behalf of the Board of Directors, which is made up of a lot of the leading companies and businesses in this city, we're here to support Karen and stay out of your way, as we will do with Nina, who is succeeding Karen. But in thinking about my comments, the thing that I think is most important about Karen is her legacy. Not only is she a wonderful woman, and I've had a chance to work with her very closely for the last few years, she's loved by her family and her friends, as well as highly respected and loved by the Fire Department. But here is her legacy. We had a fire department that was not the world's finest seven years ago. We have today one of the world's finest fire departments. And if her legacy means anything, it's that you've made a contribution, among others, to a massive footprint to raise the profile of our fire department, to be one of the world's finest. And the mission you accomplished, that you started out seven years ago, has been substantially completed. And your legacy, I think, will be remembered forever by the LA Fire Department. So on behalf of the Board of Directors, thank you.
On behalf of all of us-
Mr. Englander, I do have some members that would like to speak.
Absolutely.
I'd like to first recognize Mr. Buscagno.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Karen, we first met when I was working the chief's office, myself and my partner Sarah Faden.
She's over there.
Love Sarah. First introduced to you, and you took on the role as the executive director of the Los Angeles Police Foundation, and focused on the importance of non-budgetary items to help move forward and advance the LAPD as it related to youth programs. You're instrumental in helping with advancing and going citywide with our Team CPAD program, specialized training, equipment, technology, and your commitment, as Mitch indicated, and your dedication to this city will truly be missed. And I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart, not only for what you've done for the city, the departments, and the Fire and Police Department, but also just being who you are. You're small but mighty. And I know we know where to track you down, and I want to thank your family. And you know, Sarah and I were helping you with events and helping advance the role, the mission, and the vision of the Los Angeles Police Foundation. Tom was right there, standing next to you. And I know those late nights really took a hit on your family, but we want to thank you and you'll truly be missed. And I do want to thank Mitch and David for bringing you here in council to recognize your love, for the city, which I know stemmed from the mayor, Mayor Riordan's Volunteer Bureau, which you were once the first executive director. And you've blossomed now to continue your love and commitment, serving both foundations. I love you, we love you, and you'll truly be missed. Thank you, Karen.
Ms. Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, Karen, it's been a long time. I had the incredible privilege of getting to know you and call you a friend back in our days, working for the Riordan administration. And you were an incredible leader back then, and one of the greatest examples of a selfless individual that has made her life a commitment to service. I am so proud of the work that you've left an indelible mark on this city. From your work as a leader for the Volunteer Bureau, to then go on to the Police Foundation, and then, of course, the Fire Foundation, which, you know, for me, that's an extension of my family, a lifelong extension of my family. And I am incredibly grateful for the work that you've done. It's, we're going to, you will be sorely missed, but know that you've created a path for us and the leadership to follow, to continue the great work to support not just the men and women of the LA City Fire Department, but for all of the examples that you've done with the Police Foundation, you've just been an incredible leader and a friend. And I'm so proud of you, and congratulations on this well-deserved retirement. I wish you all the best, and thank you for everything.
Mr. Bonin.
Thank you very much. This is one of those situations where everything has been said, but I want to, on behalf of my constituents, I want to thank you. You have helped as much as the firefighters in keeping lives and property safe in my district. All weekend long, folks have been asking how to support the Fire Department, and the chief yesterday said, "It is your foundation that is the way to best help the Fire Department." I want to thank you in particular for your support in helping us get the iPads for Firefighters program going. You've just been wonderful, and we are enormously grateful.
Ms. Martinez.
Well, my friend, I didn't want this day to come. We've had some really good times in my office, and we've gotten to know each other over the course of four years. But Karen, to me, one of the most important things that we accomplished together was funding the Girls Camps. And you know how much I cared about initiating the work and making sure that our young people, particularly the women in our communities, saw themselves as future firefighters with the Los Angeles Fire Department. But I have to say, on behalf of the many kids that you touched, you know, over the summer and over the course of the Girls Camp, thank you so much for leading the way, for working with my office and my staff. Alexis and I could not be more grateful to you for believing in the work that we needed to do and raising the money that we knew we could raise to ensure that little girls saw themselves participating in the camps and making sure that one day they can become firefighters themselves. And, Council President, it just goes to show that when you put a woman in charge, she gets things done. And she gets it done because she's feisty, tenacious, and determined. And I love everything about that. And I know when you have lunch, you know, we're going to see each other. I know where you hang out. I just want to say thank you, congratulations. Get some rest, because I'm going to be calling you, because I've got more lists of things that we've got to get done. So, love you, babe. Thank you.
Back to you, Mr. Englander.
Thank you. Karen, this is signed by all the council members and the mayor. And we just wish you the best. We love you, and we're a better city because of you. God bless you. Thank you so much. Karen Wagner. There's one more person we haven't heard from yet.
Thank you. I will try not to blubber. Many, many years ago, when I was a little girl, my father gave me an amazing gift. We left the Midwest and we moved to Los Angeles. Living here has been the greatest thing. And I've lived in other places, and I can tell you, this is it. Not only living in this amazing, forward-thinking city, but at that time, I got to go to UCLA. I love SC now, but in those days, UCLA was both academically and athletically the university in Los Angeles. So it was a good time to be a Bruin. Mayor Riordan obviously gave me a gift in hiring me. And doing the Volunteer Bureau and doing Adopt a Fire Station there and going on to police and fire has been an amazing experience. When I worked in the mayor's office, I worked with every city department. And while I loved them all, there was a very special place in my heart for the Fire Department. And when I left the mayor, I asked the then-chief if we could start a foundation. It wasn't in the cards, but thank you to Bernard Parks, I got to go to work for the Police Department. And it was an amazing experience with so many rich things we were able to do for the department and for the city. There's no question that public safety is the most important function of city government. And thank you all for all the support you've given to police and fire. With the coming back to the Fire Department was coming back to my first love, as my mother said. And it's been an amazing experience. Not only are firefighters and paramedics very skilled at what they do, they're really professionals, but I've never worked with people who are more nourishing, more hospitable, more courteous, more all-about, welcoming you in and making sure that you're comfortable, even when you know they may not be so comfortable. The recent fires have been a very interesting opportunity. Only because of the fires, and this should not discourage people from giving, only because of the fires this week were at about $130,000 raised, and I know I got more this morning on my phone, and some additional grants that were coming in for other reasons. So Nina will get to start off with a nice bank account to get things going. And I think the fires have brought to everybody's attention all the wonderful things that the Fire Department does. On a personal note, and Councilmember Martinez is going to love this, my synagogue was threatened. The fire was right onto the campus of the synagogue. And the men and women of Fire Station 37 and others actually saved the synagogue, and we're going to be able to have we're going to have a service there tomorrow afternoon. So, that's pretty exciting. Working with Chief Terrasus, with Chief Everett, and with all the men and women of the department has been an extraordinary honor. And our board, as Andy said, is a terrific group of people who really, really care. And I know I've been a nag in a pest, but it's for such a good cause. So I encourage everybody to continue showing the love to the LAFD. They need a lot more, as the chief said. I was at a station yesterday and they were washing their turnout gear and the extractors we provided. And I was so excited to hear that the drones are up and actually providing the kind of safety we wanted them to provide. The hand tools that Crew 3 is out there using today to fight the fires, we bought all their hand tools. And it does go on and on, but I want to say, it's really about the Fire Department. Andy always says, "Great job. If I were doing it for anybody else, we couldn't be this successful." These are the most community-minded, giving, selfless, and this week, exhausted human beings on the planet. And I got to hug some of them yesterday as they came off the lines. They deserve everything we can give them. They risk their lives. They literally do. And they are just out there constantly making this a better city for all of us. So they are the greatest fire department anywhere. And I thank Chief Terrasus for his leadership. I thank Andy for his. And I thank all of you. I walked in the door here in 1995. And I'm walking out hoping I did leave things better. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Mr. President, there are requests to continue. One, A, C, as well as E to January 9, 2018, sir.
So ordered. And as there- Okay, as we're clearing the room, Madam Clerk, why don't we vote on item 20? Let's, on item 20, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Okay, and as the room is clearing out, I want to recognize Ms. Martinez for our next presentation. Ms. Martinez, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you very much, and good morning, colleagues. Today, I'm recognizing an individual that has championed diversity in engineering field for over 40 years. SHIP, the National Founding President, Rodrigo Garcia. It is an honor to recognize this incredible, hard-working, passionate, and innovative gentleman, Rod Garcia. For those of you who may not know, Rod has been instrumental in the development of the Latino engineering community. When Rod began his Los Angeles City career as an engineer in 1968, he quickly recognized just how underrepresented people of color were. Rod, along with a few of his colleagues, engineers sought to create a group of individuals with similar backgrounds. A group of like-minded people who had an understanding of what it was like to be a minority in a heavily white field. Rod and his colleagues decided to form SHIP, the Society of Hispanic Professional Engineers, in 1974 here in Los Angeles. And as often as you've heard me say this before, I want to say it again, is everything great originates in Los Angeles. Rod and his colleagues wanted to foster an organization that not only allowed Latinos the opportunity to connect with others interested in the engineering field, but to create a network and a pipeline for the future generation of Latino engineers. Much like myself, Rod hadn't overcome social and institutional barriers. So not only do I commend Rod for overcoming his institutional obstacles, but I can personally relate to them. And because of that, it gives me such a great pleasure to be able to honor you and recognizing all your work and your efforts in the engineering field. Forty years since its founding, SHIP has now grown into a national-profile organization, run by a full-time management team with 1,988 professional members, 8,027 student members, 58 professional chapters, 200 student chapters, and 121 junior high school chapters with a diverse representation- a diverse representation of women and men engineers. Let's give Rod another big round of applause. Another individual who has also contributed to the Latino community and understands the challenges that we face as a minority, but also as a woman, is a really good friend of mine, and the only engineer currently serving on the Board of Public Works is my good friend, Commissioner Lou Rivas.
Thank you, Councilwoman, Council President, and Councilmembers. I'm very excited to be here today to honor founder of SHIP, Rod Garcia. You know, going from Pacoima to MIT, like I did, was very difficult, especially as a 17-year-old girl. You know, leaving friends, family, and my community was very difficult, even though it was such a great opportunity to study engineering at MIT. It was scary to leave home, especially since I had never really left Los Angeles. And upon arrival, I immediately was encouraged to join SHIP. MIT had a SHIP chapter, went to the first meeting, and instantly had a family away from home. SHIP helped me get internships of my first job, and just, it was great to be part of this network, and I'm very grateful for Rod and the rest of the founding fathers of SHIP, and very proud that SHIP was started here in Public Works at the Bureau of Engineering. And now, as a Public Works Commissioner, I'm happy to support the organization, and especially on behalf of young girls that oftentimes don't have the support from family to study what people think are non-traditional fields for women. I'm very grateful that an organization like this exists for young Latina girls that oftentimes don't have this support, but with SHIP, they're welcomed, and they're provided mentorship, support, and access to a great professional network. You know, today, SHIP has over 10,000 members nationwide, and what I was hearing from Rod yesterday was that when they started in Los Angeles, I think there was like seven people, but they still called themselves a national organization, because he knew that this would be, one day, a national organization with thousands of members, and I'm very happy that he was right. So, thank you, Rod, thank you to the Public Works Commissioners in the '70s that were very supportive of SHIP, and our city engineer at the time, Donald Tillman, that was also a big supporter of this organization. They saw the vision that Rod had and supported it, and I hope to do the same. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Commissioner Rivas. And with us here this morning is also sanitation general manager Enrique Salivar.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilwoman Norrie Martinez, thank you very much. This is a particularly special moment for me. Of the 40 years that Rod has been at this, I have known him for 35 years. I think that makes me sort of part of his generation, which I'm very proud to call myself a disciple of Rod Garcia, Rod Rodrigo Garcia. You know, I was trying to think of the best way to describe what Rod has meant for us engineers. I am an engineer. Didn't go to MIT, but I went to an equally great school, Cal Poly Pomona, right here in LA County. And, and I, you know, I said, it has to be a word that describes someone who does a lot for a lot of people. 40,000 engineers have been Rod's disciples over the last 35 years, but it also has to be a word that captures his courage. So, Norrie, Councilwoman Martinez, the word that I have baptized them with now is El Padrino. Rod has been El Padrino for, that means godfather, for 40,000-plus engineers. And yes, it's true that in the beginning, primarily male engineers, but Councilwoman Martinez, with leaders like yourself and Louz, there are now probably more women engineers, including in SHIP. The SHIP LA chapter is led by mostly women engineers. Some of them are standing here with Rod. So, it's such a special privilege. It was Rod who helped me through Cal Poly Pomona. It was Rod who helped me in my career, and it's been Rod who has kept me encouraged and grounded on what it's like and what our duty is as Mexican-American engineers in this great city of ours. So, thank you, Councilwoman Martinez, for providing this special recognition for Rod. Gracias.
Thank you, Enrique. Rod is someone who has demonstrated a vision and courage and determination. His call to action led an organized effort of a small group of pioneer Latinos and Latinos engineers to advocate for more development, recruitment, and hiring in the advancement of Latino engineers here at City Hall and around the country. I want to also recognize his wife, who's with us this morning, Cindy Wong.
Give her a big round of applause.
She's a bit shy, but I'm sure that you were very, very patient with Rod as he was organizing the rest of the engineers in the country, so thank you, Cindy, for being here this morning. And I also want to thank Rod for being that visionary and advocating at a time where we immensely needed his support and his help so that little girls and little boys would one day see themselves as future engineers here in the city and in our country. Members, if there's no one, are there any members on the queue?
Yes, I'd like to recognize Mr. Wezar.
Before I bring Rod up, yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez, for bringing up this great presentation, and thank you to Rodrigo and SHIP for having the foresight way back then to see what would be and continues to be one of the greatest challenges for this country, and that is to get more people of color and women in the STEM fields, and SHIP has been doing that for years, not only through mentorships, but making young people aware of the possibility. So it's an incredible public service you've done. And Rodrigo in particular, when I got to the school board back in 2001, one of our biggest challenges was to build schools. School district hadn't built any schools in over 30 years, and any comprehensive high schools over 30 years, and had some of the worst overcrowding in the country with respect to our young people trying to get a basic education. And what you did is not only work with a school district in the STEM fields and help make that accessible for other students, but also, we worked on making a goal that all contracts through some of the proceeds in building schools will go to 25%, a goal of 25% to go to minority, small businesses. And so, I wanted to thank you for that. I think what we did after that, we took it to not only construction, but took it district-wide for all contracting in the district, and so I think we've done a lot to have more small business participation at the school district through some of your work. So thank you so much. You've been an incredible public servant. You are a role model, not only through SHIP, but a lot of the other work we've done outside of SHIP as well, so thank you so much for your service.
Thank you, Mr. Wezar.
Back to you, Ms. Martinez. Oh, no, 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 Ms. Rodriguez.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Martinez, for bringing in this presentation. Rod, thank you for keeping the door open for a diverse new generation of engineers, and to helping to understand that your role as a trailblazer was one to help make sure that we allow that opportunity for others to follow. You know, I'm very proud of the work that my good friend Louz Rivas is doing on the Board of Public Works, and if not for the vision and the leadership that you exuded to help make sure that organizations like this exist and serve a purpose to help keep those opportunities alive for people that look just like us, we wouldn't have the kind of opportunities that we have here today in having leadership that is representative of the city of Los Angeles. So I want to thank you so much for doing just that and demonstrating the legacy and the responsibility that each of us have to make sure that we do that for more members of our community, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez, and thank you for representing as well on the Board of Public Works as the Commissioner. At this time, Mr. President, I'd like to thank Ron for taking action and for highlighting the importance of diversity. Colleagues, please help me welcome Rod Rodriguez. I'm sorry, Garcia, I'm talking about you. Help me welcome Rod Garcia. Thank you.
Welcome, sir.
Well, I'd like to thank this honorable council, especially Councilwoman Norrie Martinez, thank you very much for this recognition. Commissioner Louz Rivas, especially a friend and director Enrique Zaldabar. This is quite an honor. I feel this is kind of like, you know, back to the future. You know, I come from the city of Los Angeles, I got my training here. I worked at the county before, and I used to sit down at the county board of supervisors and watch the politics, and I really enjoyed that. And I did the same thing here in the city council. So you guys make a lot of things happen, and it probably couldn't have happened without, you know, the dynamics of the city of Los Angeles, the people like yourselves. You guys are the great supporters. The Board of Public Works stepped up at that time, the city engineer at that time stepped up. We asked if he would help us, and he said, "Yes, you got carte blanche." So, we were six employees, city engineer employees, working in public works, and we had this idea, and we said, "We're going to make it happen." We planned it and made it happen, but again, with a lot of support from people like yourselves, and I hope you continue that support for our organization and other organizations that push for STEM programs, and for also, as Councilman Wezar said, for participation in your contracts and employment. So, we look forward to that. Councilwoman Martinez already spoke about the 10,000 members that we have, and we're in a position right now that we have something like 40,000 that's gone through the pipeline, and we need to capture those. We need to bring them in too, so that we can grow faster. And we have a great chapter here, the chapter, SHIP Los Angeles, and it's headed up right now by Rosa Degado, but she has a tremendous board, and they're really going to push hard for membership, and last night, we had a great event at the Build More. I was quite impressed. They're really dynamic, very warm, and, you know, what's the word, committed and motivated. So, again, without people like yourselves, you know, we couldn't accomplish anything, and we look forward to, you know, continuing our success and pushing for STEM careers, because I think that's what's going to help not only the city, but the nation. So thank you again for this honorable resolution. Thank you very much.
So Rod, on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, thank you very much for your contributions to our city and to men and women throughout this country. Thank you very much.
Thank you. If we could pull up item 10, we can vote on, the concerns about that have been dealt with. Let's prepare to vote on item 10. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Okay. Mr. Sadio, are you ready? So, now I want to recognize Mr. Sadio for another important presentation. Go ahead, play a video.
We have a video, Mr. President, to start off.
Okay.
Just get a nice break here. Frente a frente.
Gracias por continuar con nosotros, Guillermo Ahumada, @Gahumada@LBIMedia.com. En Frente a Frente, nosotros conversamos temas y tratamos de esplayar un poquito más de lo normal, lo que las noticias no pueden desarrollar, para que usted sepa lo que tiene que saber, y si necesita algún tipo de información, por eso que queremos explotar al concejal con todas las cosas buenas que están haciendo para la comunidad, especialmente para la comunidad inmigrante, porque estamos siendo atacados, ¿no? De verdad, de verdad, estamos siendo, tenemos un ambiente de odio como nunca antes, yo creo.
Es, sí, ¿no? La deportación, y este, los deportaciones de, bueno, seis semanas pasadas fue un gran impacto, un espectro por la comunidad, el caso de Romo Loa es muy importante para demostrar a Trump que aquí nosotros vamos a proteger cada persona, cada inmigrante. El trabajo bueno de la ciudad hoy es el trabajo proinmigrante. Este, la declaración de Eric Cassetti, de su acción 20 es buena cosa, la relación con la policía, la perspectiva, la actitud de el jefe de la policía Charlie Beck, el orden 40, muy importante, no hay una relación va a tener de la policía y de ICE, y el trabajo de mi comité. Y este, nosotros dan los fondos para proteger por este gran fondo de 10 millones de dólares, y este, bueno, para mí estamos en una ciudad sanctuaria.
There we go. Now, Mr. President, that may look like a shameless plug, but I had nothing to do with that. We are honored today to have a giant in journalism, someone who has distinguished themselves at the most important Spanish-language mediums that exist, Tele Mundo, Channel 22, Lieberman Broadcasting, and of course, Univision. He has brought to us the most pressing issues of the day affecting healthcare and workers' rights, the environment, and of course, on the question of immigration, he is one of our experts. He's also an entrepreneur, he's also a philanthropist. He's the executive director of the Bread and Life Community Development Corporation, which is a community-based nonprofit, and he's been doing that for the last 12 years. It's a nonprofit that's focused on developing self-esteem through educational workshops that would address questions like domestic violence, drug abuse, and family counseling. And he's also well-known for a show that you just saw a second ago called Frente a Frente, where he interviews important figures in the Latino community, many of them much more important than I. His career is a mere 35 years. He is a staple, he was a favorite of my family, a favorite of my mom's. He has the moral authority and the voice to help dictate policy in our community, and his voice on behalf of immigrants has ensured that they have a significant role in our society and that their issues and concerns are brought to the forefront. So it's a great, great honor for us to declare this day, December 8th, the Guillermo Ahumada Day. He is currently the managing editor and news producer for Estrella TV, Channel 62. With that, let me bring up... I'm afraid he thought I was going to forget to bring him up. With that, let me bring up the esteemed, the honorable, the well-known, the editor and news producer, Guillermo Ahumada.
Thank you. Thank you very much. In fact, if I can just interrupt you for one second, I'd like to recognize Mr. Wezar.
Thank you very much. Guillermo, ya era tiempo, porque sabemos la importancia que usted ha hecho por la ciudad y por el periodismo y la prensa. Muchísimas gracias por su trabajo. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a great journalist who has, when you go and get interviewed by him, you know, when we get interviewed by journalists, you start thinking about the formality and how are you going to answer it? Am I using the right words? Is this going to sound right? But once you start getting interviewed by him, you realize you're... But once you start getting interviewed by him, you realize you're just having a conversation with a neighbor, with a friend, and that's what people want to hear. When people hear the news, they want to hear a basic conversation that makes sense to them without all the lights and formalities. He goes in a studio and just does the job, and I think you've done a tremendous service to the Spanish-speaking community in Los Angeles and the region because of your approach to issues. And when you interview, you know, you're not only interviewing us, asking us questions, but we could see you care about the issues that you're asking about. You really care about the issues. You care about the Latino community and you've done a marvelous job in your career. So this day is long overdue. For those who are bilingually challenged, that's how I started off, by saying that this day is long overdue. Felicidades, logre desamos mucho su trabajo. And we always end our interviews, when I've been on there, Guillermo's always asking about young people and what can we do more. This is off the camera and talking about what else we can do to help our young people succeed in this city, stay away from drugs, from gangs. And so, thank you for your service. This is long overdue. Felicidades.
Voy a hablar en español y le voy a dar las gracias. Esto es detrás de un gran equipo. Yo no soy solo. Están todos mis compañeros, mis amigos, mi familia, mis hijos, mis nietos. Y servir la comunidad para mí es exactamente mi familia. Y quiero hablar en español porque nosotros hemos sido muy discriminados también y nuestra comunidad necesita ser apoyada. Nos tenemos que levantar. Thank you very much. Muchas gracias a todos y vamos a seguir luchando.
Well, thank you very much, everybody, for this big recognition on behalf of LBI Media. My name is Pedro Ferriz. I'm the vice president of news of the company and anchor of the Late Show. And it's a great honor to have this man working with us because he's one of the pillars of communications, not only in the U.S. He's very well-recognized in Latin America, Mexico, Salvador, Chile, Argentina. Everybody knows in media who Guillermo Almada is, and this is a very, very, very well-earned recognition, and I thank you very much.
As Mr. Huizar said, Mr. President, long overdue this day. Guillermo Almada's day in this great city of Nuestra Señora de Los Ángeles y Porciún Cula. Guillermo, the community hopes that you will keep your great job, especially defending the rights of immigrants in this capital of immigrants in America. Thank you very much.
Now we're becoming a rally. Go ahead.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Sarilla, for recognizing the work and legacy of Guillermo on behalf of Armandad Mexicana and the Full Rights for Immigrants Coalition. I want to thank you for recognizing this man. There's not too many outlets where the immigrant community have an open door, but wherever Guillermo is, there's always a door open for our issues. So thank you so much, Guillermo. My name is Raúl Murillo from Armandad Mexicana.
Let's give him one more round of applause after he's leaving the floor, Mr. Sadio. Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, and just for the record, the amending motion is a technical amendment, not changing the dollar amount, but clarifying the initial motion.
Okay, so on this item, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Ms. Martinez, for an introduction.
Yes, colleagues. It gives me a great honor to introduce to you today Salvadorian Congresswoman Jacqueline Rivera. I want, please join me in welcoming her to the city of Los Angeles and to our city council meeting.
Let's give her a round of applause.
Congresswoman Jacqueline Rivera has probably served the people of El Salvador for three terms. As a party leader, Congresswoman Rivera has driven initiatives around electoral legislation, judicial reform, and judge selections. She has been a lifetime champion of women's rights, knowing firsthand the need for women to participate in politics because a government without women is a weak government. And Congresswoman Rivera has advocated for the Salvadorian youth and for her country her entire life. I want us to... Bienvenida, diputada Jacqueline Rivera. Ella es, nos acompaña la congresista salvadoreña Jacqueline Rivera. Ella llega de, le queremos dar la bienvenida a la ciudad de Los Ángeles y al consejo municipal de aquí de Los Ángeles. La congresista Jacqueline Rivera ha representado orgullosamente la comunidad de El Salvador por tres términos. Como la líder de su partido, la congresista Rivera ha proveído iniciativas enfocadas en la legislación electoral, la reforma judicial, y la selección de los jueces. Como mujer y mujer luchadora, le doy la bienvenida, diputada. Quisiera decir unas pocas palabras y bienvenida a la ciudad de Los Ángeles.
Muchas gracias. Muchas gracias. Muchas gracias, Nori Martinez. Gracias, Presidente. Gracias al consejo por la oportunidad que nos dan de recibirnos. Gracias al consejo de Los Ángeles y a la ciudad de Los Ángeles por apoyar mucho a nuestra comunidad. Esta es la segunda, diría yo, la segunda ciudad que más salvadoreño gobierna.
Hello? Sorry about that.
Gracias nuevamente a Nori Martinez por la oportunidad que nos da de dirigirnos a ustedes.
Thank you so much again to Nori Martinez for the opportunity to direct my attention to you.
Gracias, Presidente, por recibirnos y a todo el consejo.
Thank you, President, for receiving us and all the members of the city council for receiving me.
En nombre del pueblo de El Salvador, muchísimas gracias a la ciudad de Los Ángeles por apoyar mucho a nuestra comunidad.
In the name of the Salvadorian citizens, thank you so much for providing the support to our citizens here in Los Angeles.
Esta es la ciudad que más salvadoreño gobierna.
This is the city that has more Salvadorian citizens.
Le estamos muy agradecidos y agradecidas por todo el apoyo a la comunidad salvadoreña.
We are very thankful for all the support that you provided to all the citizens in El Salvador living here in Los Angeles.
Después de la capital San Salvador, Los Ángeles es la ciudad principal como municipio del Salvador. Es el municipio número 263.
After San Salvador, Los Angeles has become the number, the 263 municipal city in Los Angeles.
Pero el municipio más importante porque es donde habitan más salvadoreños que cualquier municipio del Salvador.
But this has become the city, the most important city because this is the number, the highest number of Salvadorian citizens living here in Los Angeles. Thank you so very much.
Venimos hoy a estrechar lazos de hermanamiento con la ciudad de Los Ángeles. Soy candidata a la alcaldía de San Salvador para marzo del próximo año.
I came here to embrace our friendship with the city of Los Angeles, and I'm going to be a candidate for next year in March.
Y esperamos desde la municipalidad en el próximo periodo estrechar mejor nuestros lazos con los angelinos, con toda la ciudad de Los Ángeles y todos los compradores otras que viven acá.
And we hope that we are able to embrace the friendship that El Salvador has with the city of Los Angeles, and we hope to see you then.
Gracias por su amor, por su cariño, por su apoyo. Muchísimas gracias. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for your love, for your support. Thank you so much.
Thank you and welcome.
Members, this is, I want to just give her a token of our appreciation for coming to Los Angeles. Wish her luck in her next round of elections. And El Salvador, the city of El Salvador is also a sister city with the city of Los Angeles. And in recognition of that, muchísimas gracias, diputada, y felicidades, y a seguir adelante.
Muchas gracias. Gracias.
Sergeants, if you could remove the ropes. Go ahead, Mr. Murphy.
What items?
You have all of items one and three, 25, 26.
Item number one.
General public comment.
Item number one is the rent escrow and rent. When they do a good job, I applaud them, and when they don't do a good job, you'll hear about it. Item 25 is an item that I am not supporting. Let me go into my general public comment.
Go right ahead. Give him just one minute, Sharon.
My home parish is celebrating its anniversary a week from Saturday. I hope they come, I hope they have a presentation between today and Wednesday. I'm hoping. Thank you.
Mr. Previn, 1B, F, and H, 3, 25, and 29, 31, 33, 34, 35, 36, 39, and general public comment.
Thank you, sir. Good morning. It's Eric Previn from CD2. 29 is the financial status report, the second one, and we've had a few little amendments that have been shuffled around by AVOC. We have a, fortunately, we're making room for the scope and size of the citywide CAT program, EIR, that obviously needs to be taken care of. And in addition to that, we are adding $2 million for miscellaneous expenditures. That was added in B, I believe. And finally, obviously, we've got the Santa Susana, $100,000 for the EIR, and a $25,000, and we do appreciate that out in CD2 for the North Hollywood Film Festival, just kind of plunked in there, just like that. These are priorities in our district, certainly, and we do appreciate it. It's not a donation, but 36 is a series of donations, and I think FOB will agree that we get 6.6 million in annual donations from a variety of miscellaneous partners, most of whom are pushed through something called the Police Foundation. And again, congratulations to the fine fundraiser for the fire department who spent 15 minutes this morning being honored. She has done an astonishing job of raising an enormous amount of money. We're very appreciative of all the money she's raised for the fire department and the foundation, I should say. 31 is an MOU between the MTA and this hallowed body on climate change. We very much appreciate your working in tandem with them, and congratulations on stuffing through item 10 on the bicycle regulations earlier. That was very nicely done. 34 is obviously Mitchell Englander shoving overtime into LAPD's pockets again and again with CD12 money, and we do appreciate it. The thing we don't appreciate that much is the 4,400 tasers. As I think you noticed, Reuters had a big article about the shock tactic, 104 deaths using tasers. I mean, I've been calling this...
Mr. President, we're off topic. This is not item 34.
Okay, just go back to 34, Mr. Previn, please.
Okay, well, I'm going to move on to item number three and two and the liquor licenses because we can't get enough liquor licenses around here. Sir, congratulations on the marijuana and the cannabis. I thought you saw our article, but I want to say this about the liquor licenses, that when we approve liquor licenses, you know, we put drunk people on the road, not intentionally. We have to monitor that. But one vision zero component that I think is worth studying carefully is these wrong-way freeway entrances, because I know Bonham would agree, we've had too many. The other, last week, there were sort of two in one day where people are going on the wrong way onto the freeway and then, you know, either killing themselves or others. I assume those people are drunk, but it's possible they're not. It's possible that we just don't have the infrastructure right.
Let's get on the item, Mr. Previn.
Well, that is on the item, sir. That's a very valid point, I think. 25 is obviously Huizar, nobody's done more than Huizar for the self-help graphics group, and 41, which is another item. This is where we're partnering up with Weingart, the community fund, just a variety of characters...
Thank you. Let's give him his general public comment.
Okay, the general public comment's going to be about HHH, but first I have to acknowledge Kretz, who was in the New York Times today saying the following quote, "Those developers better get the hell out," because he does not want them working up in the hills, and he's right. It is unsafe, and we need a brave first responder like Paul Kretz to come out and say it in the New York Times. So we appreciate him for holding the line on that. Regarding the HHH and the tragedy that we're facing with homeless population, between December 8th and 22nd, where there's something is open for review, Meg Barclay, who's doing a great job up at CAO, pushed me in touch with Rushmore Cervantes, who doesn't know what's going... Nobody seems to know, and there's a big secret item with cap and trade money that's heading for council in January, but we're not going to get a chance to hear it up in any of the committees or unfortunately, the Citizens Oversight Commission, known as the COC group, is not going to have a chance to hear it. Santana has been asking for minutes. He wants things written down. Nobody wants to write anything down. That's why we ask Mayor Garcetti, please. This is time to run for president. You have to have your house in order. You have to show people what you're doing up there. We know you're...
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. John Walsh, please come forward. Items three, 25, 26, 28, 29, 30, 31, 32, 33, 34, 35, 36, 37, and 38. Mr. John Walsh.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org or JWalshConfidential, tweeting at HollywoodDems. We need desperately another place to buy alcohol because, as we know, Mr. Buscagno, who still has several aides who haven't been murdered by some, a 14-year-old who was arrested, who was drunk, but we need more and more alcohol in this city. We need more and more hit-and-run drivers in this city. That's what's happening here, and you are vomitous and despicable. And that includes Mr. Rodriguez, who enjoys...
Let's just stay on the item.
Well, I'm telling you right now, determination of public convenience or necessity. We need alcohol. We need more people to murder. Do we really need more people to murder Buscagno's staff? He's not here, incidentally. I think he's at the graveyard. This is Silver Lake Wine, North Vigaroa. You know, if this place, if you don't give them the license, it might take 10 or 15 seconds for them to go to the nearest place to buy alcohol. This is Alcohol Hollywood. This is alcohol out of control, and the scumbags at the LA Times won't do the story mainly because the mayor flirts with them and only with the men. He's not interested in the women.
Let's get on another item, Mr. Walsh.
Okay. The next...
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org or JWalshConfidential tweeting at HollywoodDems. We need desperately another place to buy alcohol. Because as we know, Mr. Buscagno still has several aides who haven't been murdered by some, a 14-year-old who was arrested, who was drunk. But we need more and more alcohol in this city. We need more and more hit-and-run drivers in this city. That's what's happening here. And you are vomitous and despicable. And that includes Mr. Rodriguez, who enjoys.
Let's just stay on the item.
Well, I'm telling you right now, determination of public convenience or necessity. We need alcohol. We need more people to murder. Do we really need more people to murder Buscagno's staff? He's not here, incidentally. I think he's at the graveyard. This is Silver Lake Wine, North Vigaroa. You know, if this place, if you don't give them the license, it might take 10 or 15 seconds for them to go to the nearest place to buy alcohol. This is Alcohol Hollywood. This is alcohol out of control. And the scumbags at the LA Times won't do the story, mainly because the mayor flirts with, with them. And only with the men. He's not interested in the women.
Let's get on another item, Mr. Walsh.
Uh, okay. Uh, the next item, 25. And 25, city-owned property, self-help graphics. If you make the proper donations to a city councilman, the sky's the limit to how much money you can get. And they're all in, they're sneaked through. And you're not gonna find them talking about all of the money that they give, it's known as benefits, to these, these city council. And, okay, now into my one-minute of public comment.
Give him his one minute.
I just want the blacks to understand. When someone speaks in Spanish here, you'll notice, they don't translate it into English. Your job, black LA, is to learn Spanish, because the whites are disappearing and the Hispanics are gonna run things. And if you think the whites are racist, wait till you see what the Hispanics do. And I don't have to tell you, if you go to Mexico, there is nothing more racist than Mexico. And that's exactly what's gonna happen here in LA. So there's no way that you can prevent it unless you come down here in big numbers, because your freedom is about to be taken away from you. And I can speak as a white man and say anything anti-white that I want to, because you damn well know that everything I say is true. Get the hell out of this city, black people.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, who do we have next? Mr. Spindler? You have items 1, B, F, G, H, I. Go to 3, 25, 26, A and B, C. And 28, 29, 30, 31, 32, 33, 34, 35. And general public comment.
Okay, go ahead, my colleague.
Yes, let's talk about the unenforceable liens on 1. When you do a shitty job, we're the first to comment. Let's look at all the racist liens in the 8th District, like 1A. The lynching of 2,500 West Vernon Avenue. Fuck that lien. And then we get to more racism, more bigotry. 1D, 2044 West Florence, fuck that lien too. 1F, my God, on Vermont Avenue. Marquis Erastus and Promised. No more liens on Vermont Avenue, personally to Margaret Lee Thomas on Tuesday. Then we get item G, another motherfucking lien, another racist lien for the same amount of money. It's horrendous. We cannot take these liens in the 8th District anymore. Stop selling out African-Americans in CD8 Marquisie, you fucking pig. Then we get to number two. Number two's an alcohol license in Hollywood. The drunken hit-and-run capital rape, murder.
Did you sign up for item two?
Item two involves alcohol consumption.
You didn't sign up for item two.
Perhaps he should go to item three, which is the alcohol item he did sign up for.
Sign up for shit. Now we'll talk to item three. We're going to CD1.
Remember, we have the deal.
Oh, okay. Yes, yes, yes. We have the peace treaty between Mr. Sidio's office. Yes. We will defer to Mr. Sidio on item number three.
Good call.
Thank you.
All right. There we go. Item number four. Do we have a peace treaty with the 14th District?
No, fuck him.
Okay, go ahead.
Item number four, 4, 3, 8.
Mr. President, I believe the speaker didn't sign up for item number four, which has been continued, by the way.
It's the fucking all items, right?
Item four's been continued, Mr. Spindler.
It's been continued, dummy.
No, all right. I'm sorry.
Good. Now, did you make notes?
Okay, 25, 26. Yes, the 14th District for self-help graphics. Good. Yes, we actually support self-help. And we like art, art and graphics. For example, such as a certain speaker card made on May the 11th, 2016 in a federal case.
You're not on the subject. Why don't you give him his one minute, then you can say whatever you want to say. You can say whatever you want to say. Go ahead, Mr. Spindler.
Yes, but the speaker card is art, says the federal judge. It's protected art and activity speech. So then we also had noticed the man pointing his chair to my back, that son of a bitch, Paul Krikorian, eh 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 eh, made a coercive threat under the Bayne Act, Section 52.1 against Mr. Armando Herman. Under color of authority. Mr. Herman is afraid to come to the meeting in violation of his civil rights. We are making a letter to the city attorney of Downey to file an injunction against Mr. Krikorian and Mr. Mitchell Englander to enjoin them from violating Mr. Herman's First Amendment rights, including damages at $1,000 minimum. So you know what, Mr. Krikorian? Fuck you, Krikorian.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. All right. That brings us where? Richard Robinson, Martha Flores, general public comment.
Honorable President, Members, Richard Robinson. Improve, don't move. Sir, when former city councilman Lindsey was rebuilding the Biltmore Hotel downtown, became a sanctuary as he and Tom Bradley focused much-needed spiritual leadership on the needs of African-American blacks. Gentrification is again rearing its ugly head as snakes sneak into government, ignoring the needs of homeless and other poor people shoved into an overcrowded and underserved downtown Skid Row. At Main and Fifth, that hotel complex, the Frontier, million-dollar hotel, can be a point of light for the people instead of a source of get-rich-quick, schemers, cheap, guppy rip-off lofts. Thank you.
Okay. Was it Martha and a Jennifer? Do I have a Jennifer here? Ms. Flores, come forward. Mr. Spindler, you're disrupting this meeting. So just please keep quiet. It is not your turn. It's Ms. Flores's. Go ahead.
My name is Martha Flores, and I just come to say, so, so much going on with the landlords. I lived 12 years in this place, Herman Oaks, and the guy is Persian. And he's doing a lot of elder abuse. He's go anytime to knock the door 3:00 in the morning and 5:00 in the night. He's over there. He gets by the place about two years ago, but he used to be the manager. And it's, I feel like it's a lot of abusing. It's trespassing for elder women, hate, because he get the neighbors and they say, Martha's crazy. I'm not crazy. I just know that my rights and I know that a lot of people get hurt because his way is not a honest person. She talk, talk, talk. He get people, my neighbor number three right now from El Salvador, she's with him because put less rent. And then she just doing like signing papers against me to put me away from the building. And I say, they wanna put me like a bad guy. And the only thing I want is no more drugs.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Flores. So again, Jennifer, is there a Jennifer here? Please, and.
Good afternoon.
Yes.
Jennifer, for item number one.
1F and 1G.
One, give me one second. I'm sorry. No, items 1F and 1G. Is that the correct one? Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon, Council. My name's Jennifer. I'm a COO for Sassony Development, the ownership for those two parcels. We already have paid the citation fines for the abatement cleaning fees. And they've already been removed from our preliminary title report. This was done November 14th.
Okay, so we are gonna receive and file these items because they've been handled as you suggested. So that's my understanding, paid in full.
Yes, they have. And they've already been removed from our preliminary title report. So the matter's settled. We're okay now?
Yes.
Beautiful. Thank you very much, Council. I appreciate it.
Now let's vote on that item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Now it's been handled. Let's take up item 26B. I have a David Robbins here. Please come forward.
Good morning. In regards to item B, which is 6517 West Orange Street, I'm a tenant there, and the building has been under REIT for quite a while. They, these, the last inspector, apparently a senior city inspector, was supposed to have come at near the end of November and done the final inspection. I was there that day. I never got any notice. I never, I was there all day working at my place, and no one came, especially not in regards to the specific items that affect my apartment directly. Those are vertical windows throughout the apartment that do not open properly, as well as a circuit breaker on the back wall. The difference between the final, this final inspection and the inspection before that, which was done by the community outreach, which is part of the process of REIT, they, they had, they had listed those.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, on this item, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, is it item 28? Sophia, item 28. Sophia?
And, Mr. President, just for the record, there's been, um.
Hmm? Yes?
Mr. President, just for the record, amending motions for items 19, 25, 29, and 33 have been posted and circulated, sir.
Can we take up those items real quick, and I'll go back to Ms. Sophia? You have those. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Sophia, yes.
Yes. Sofia Guerra, Coalition for Economic Survival. Then council member, now Mayor Garcetti, and council member Park successfully put forth this law nine years ago, and it has been continuously extended since. Unfortunately, it is still needed, and CES fully supports this motion. The foreclosure crisis and its impact on hard-working families is an American tragedy. It's especially unjust for the forgotten victims, the tenants. This law protects renters living in foreclosed, bank-owned, non-rent-controlled rental units. These are good tenants. They've done nothing wrong, paid their rent on time. But without this protection, these heartless banks can evict them without reason. This law has protected many families from being unjustly displaced and needs to be extended. We believe this ordinance should be permanent. A three-year extension is better than a one or two years. We strongly urge your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, on this, on this item, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, let's take up now items 3, 30, 31, 32, 34, and 35. Please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Let's do items 36, 37, 38, and 9. On those items, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, now we're gonna take up item 24. Mr. Bloomingfield.
Thank you, Mr. President. On December 14th, the FCC is gonna rule on an order calling, called Restoring Internet Freedom. Although the word freedom denotes independence, the independence of the internet is actually at risk if this order is approved. Many people come to this country because it is the land of opportunity that provides access to a better life. The internet has become a critical piece of that access. Access to online classes for people who work 40 hours a week at minimum wage just to get by. Access to job sites so people know what employment opportunities are available. Access to information, because everyone must have the ability to learn more about our world and learn how to better themselves. What the FCC is threatening to do is will put all of that at risk. If we create different lanes of access for people with means and those without, that risk eliminates people's right to information. This resolution puts our city on the record in standing up against the repeal of net neutrality and helping ensure a free and fair internet for all. FCC Chairman Ajit Pai is hoping that, frankly, we're not paying attention. He's hoping that everyday people don't know how net neutrality actually impacts their lives. The loss of net neutrality will disadvantage small businesses, startups, because in order to flourish, they need access to their customers. And if they're in the slow lane, they're not gonna have the same access as larger companies who can afford to pay internet, internet service for, at VIP speeds. It was great to see nationwide protests yesterday at Verizon stores. Chairman Pai was formerly an attorney at their company. Folks are waking up about this, and that's why I want LA to wake up as well. There were also protests at many other locations, even here at City Hall, challenging this proposal. The fact is, not everyone is able to physically attend a protest or a march. In today's political reality, we need open and fair internet to hold our elected officials accountable, to ensure the public has access to reliable news sources. We need to support digital activism now more than ever. There are a lot of companies that are actually standing up for this. And I, you know, I stand with them and think we should. Google, Facebook, Twitter, Amazon, Uber, OkCupid, Etsy, Netflix, eBay. There are lots of nonprofits from the ACLU for the Center on Media Justice, religious organizations, Conference on Catholic Bishops. There's a whole list of organizations, of entertainers, musicians, who are standing up. This is a big issue. That's gonna affect us. You rarely see this kind of wide range of support on an issue like this. Anyone watching can add their support to this important cause by signing on to one of the many online petitions, petition.wighthouse.gov, change.org, fcc.gov. And by the way, anyone watching on the city broadcast ought to think about if they're enjoying watching this, because it's very possible, if this goes through, that this kind of broadcast on the internet will be in the slow lane for streaming, and it'll be much more difficult to see it. Colleagues, I urge your aye vote on this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bloomingfield. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Items 37 and 38. Madam Clerk, let's send those forthwith. Mr. Harris Dawson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to ask that item 31 be sent forthwith.
Without objection. Madam Clerk, that brings us where?
And that brings Council to motions for posting referrals, sir.
Okay, they have posted, they have referred. Ms. Martinez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I actually just want to take a few minutes to recognize my interns from my district office, if you guys can stand up. They're from Council Northridge. They're a field internship program in my office in both Sun Valley and my Van Nuys offices. With us this afternoon is Samantha Oruwia. Hi, Samantha. Mayra Perez, Jose Franco, and Daniela Rosas. Can we please give them a round of applause?
Give them a round of applause.
Thank you very much for all your hard work and assisting our office and our constituents in Council District 6. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And now. And now, Mr. Sadiya?
Yes, my staff asked me to make sure that we note that item... Twenty-eight. Move forthwith, please.
Item twenty, forthwith?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight. So it's item twenty-eight, forthwith.
Thank you.
Mr. Buscagno?
Thank you. I just want to welcome John Jones III, the deputy council member from Watts here. Know that our deputies spend a couple days out of the month here to understand and appreciate the legislative agenda. And I just want to recognize him. I know, Mr. President, he was instrumental with his Eastside Riders Club to put together the bikes, a thousand bikes, thanks to Huffy, that you distributed throughout the city. So I do want to take this moment to recognize the work that all of our deputies do, but today, John Jones III from Watts. Thank you, John. We love you.
And he's a good man, too. Let's give him a round of applause. Good, hard-working man. Okay, all please rise. All please rise for adjourning motions. I'd like to recognize Mr. Mitch Englander.
Thank you. Colleagues, I ask today that we adjourn in memory of a dear friend of mine. In fact, many of you either know her or certainly her family. Suzanne Sampson, Sue. Born June ninth, nineteen forty-five, to Lillian and Edward Greenbaum. Sue lived in New York till nineteen fifty-eight, when her family moved to California. And they lived in several Los Angeles areas before settling in Pacoima. She attended and graduated from Polytechnic High School in Sun Valley. It was there she met Victor, Vic, at a party in Van Nuys, and they started dating shortly thereafter. They both fell in love instantly, were married April twelfth, nineteen sixty-three. They renewed their vows on their fiftieth wedding anniversary in front of friends and family. In fact, I recall Dennis Zine officiated that renewal. Only having no college education at all, Sue decided to go into college later in life and then received her bachelor's and her master's degree from Cal State Northridge in psychology. Sue entered private practice for several years and worked with women and children throughout the San Fernando Valley. Sue always believed that children are our future and are the future of the world. She served on the California Board of Psychology for eight years and as the president for three. She also served on the California University Board of Regents for three years. She was very active. Many women's groups here in Los Angeles and many other nonprofit organizations. In fact, she also sat on the board of the North Valley YMCA, the PALS board. She started a foundation called CARE, Children at Risk Every Day, that aimed to feed children and families throughout the San Fernando Valley. In nineteen ninety-five, they partnered with PALS to give children a hot meal and a present during the holiday season. In fact, it's become one of the largest toy drives in my district. Sue was a firecracker and always spoke her mind. She had the biggest heart. She'd give the shirt off her back to anyone that asked. Sue and Vic believed in giving back to the community and living and leaving the world a better place, and they found it. And they live that every day. She was an amazing woman, a wife, mother, a daughter, and a friend. She's survived by her husband Vic, their children Cory and Ken, daughter-in-law Cleo, and their two grandchildren, who she completely adored, Savannah and Evan. She is truly loved, will always be remembered. I, I remember, I brought a friend here to counsel, Richard Laner, if you remember him. He passed away a couple years ago. And he was a pistol. And he always had ideas, and he was always thinking. And he had the idea of building these shipping containers for using them for housing the homeless. And I brought several council members. Mr. Sadiya was there. Mr. Harris-Dawson was there. Brought them into the meeting and said, this is a great idea. We should look into this. And soon thereafter, I found out about one of these housing programs in Orange County that used shipping containers to house some vets. And I went down there and I toured it and took some photos. And we posted it on social media to get people's input. What did they think? And Sue saw it. And she went ballistic and started posting all over the media, how dare you build one of these and you didn't include the very people that, that brought you the idea? So I called Sue and I said, Sue, I didn't build one. I just went and toured it. And my phone rang for days from everybody in the community. She never held back and was always making sure that we stepped up to do the most for everyone. She was always full of energy and, but it was always towards others, never about herself. And it really spread to her entire family. It's infectious. And so I adjourn on behalf of Sampson family, my family. Like to include in that the Smith family, very close friends with Greg, and also the Burnson family as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Englander. I'm, Mr. Harris-Dawson?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair and members. I ask that we adjourn in celebration of the gift of Mr. Leon T. Gar, who we lost at the ripe age of a hundred and three this past Tuesday. Mr. Gar was born in Ruston, Louisiana, in nineteen fourteen. He moved to Los Angeles in the post-World War II boom in the nineteen forties. And with a third-grade education, took advantage, full advantage, of the boom that was happening in Los Angeles at that time. He started a construction company, which became very, very successful, developed several shopping centers throughout South Los Angeles, developed motels, apartment buildings, single-family homes, senior citizen housing, childcare centers, and several very, very elegant homes in the beautiful neighborhood of View Park. After starting all those businesses and enterprises, we were in South Los Angeles about to lose the only black-owned bank in the region, really in the West Coast, during the savings and loans crisis. And Mr. Gar stepped in and bought Family Savings, which became Founder's Savings Bank, which has several branches throughout South Los Angeles. My grandparents opened my first checking account at Founder's Bank, and they taught me what it meant to bounce checks, which is a lesson that I am very grateful to have had at a very, very early age. Mr. Gar bought the bank, bought Family Savings, made it into a bank, transformed it. It remains to this day. At the ripe age of ninety-six, just about seven or eight years ago, Mr. Gar added another business to his portfolio, Gar Auto Body Shops, which also became very, very successful and remain in South Los Angeles. A few months ago, Mr. Price, who I know is a neighbor of Mr. Gar's for many years, had the privilege of naming Vermont and Gage Leon T. Gar Square. Representatives from Mr. Weston's office there is as well. We're very, very proud to honor him. His family let us know that even up until this last Thanksgiving, just, just a couple weeks ago, Mr. Gar was having input on the annual family turkey giveaway, making sure everything went just the way it was supposed to go. And so his services will be held in the district at First AME Church on Friday, December fifteenth, at eleven AM, and the repass at the Gar Banquet Hall on Fifty-first Street and Western Avenue.
Mr. Price?
Yeah, I'd like to sign on to that as well. As Councilman mentioned, he was a neighbor before I, before I came to the council.
So, Madam Clerk, if you'd make sure that takes place.
Yeah, and was a real source of inspiration to us all. He spanned, you know, not only business development, economic development, but certainly the importance of giving back to the community. He did that in so many, many ways. And so it was my honor to join Councilman Harris-Dawson when we renamed Gar Square earlier this year. And I just remember even celebrating his birthday, his one-hundred-and-third birthday, and just a real pioneer who will not, who will be sorely missed in our community. And I look forward to signing on as well.
Thank you, Mr. Price. So any additional adjourning? Mr. Krikorian?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I respectfully ask that this council adjourn this meeting in memory of Mina Shirvanyan, who was one of Southern California's most effective, strongest leaders of the Armenian community, involved in virtually every important endeavor that our community touched upon, whether it involved healthcare, education, social services, youth activities. Mina Shirvanyan was always involved in supporting those efforts. She lived in Los Angeles since the late nineteen fifties, when she and her husband Hakop, which, whom some of you may know, Jake Shirvanyan, arrived here from Iran. And they made a difference from the first day that they arrived in support of organizations like the Armenian Cultural Foundation, the Armenian Educational Foundation, the Armenian National Committee, Ferakhian High School, the Armenian Relief Society, the Adventist Healthcare Hospital in Glendale, and many others. She was relentless. She was fierce. She was strong as steel. But she always accomplished everything that she did with poise and with grace and with elegance. And she truly was a role model for all of us in the Armenian community and particularly for young women as well. She was married to Jake for seventy-one years and passed away just a little bit short of her ninetieth birthday. But even in, late in life, she didn't let her illness or her age slow her down one bit. Last, in summer of last year, I was with Mina and Jake in Gumri, Armenia. And many of you know that yesterday was the twenty-ninth anniversary of the horrific earthquake that struck Armenia, killing tens of thousands of people. Gumri was the center of that earthquake and has been recovering ever since. And so Jake and Mina, through their generosity and through their leadership, opened a youth center there. Even at that advanced age, they were still working to help the next generation of young people in a distant place like that that's still struggling to get on its feet. So it was because of leadership and generosity and vision like that that Mina was awarded the Knight of Silicia Medal by Katholikos Karakin II, the Prince of Silicia Medal by Katholikos Adam I. She and Jake received the highest civilian medal from the Republic of Artsakh, the Legacy Award from the Armenian National Committee, Western Region, and countless, countless other awards and recognitions because of their tremendous contributions to our community. She is survived, in addition to her husband, as I mentioned, of over seventy-one years, Hakop. She's survived by her daughter Alice Petrosian and her husband Vahak, her son, Armin Shirvanyan, many grandchildren, great-grandchildren, in-laws, nieces, nephews, and relatives, and many of those of us in the Armenian community who dearly loved her, respected her, and so many of us who benefited from the work that she devoted her life to performing. Funeral services will be held tomorrow at nine-thirty AM at Saint Mary's Armenian Apostolic Church in Glendale. And she will very much be missed. And I ask that we adjourn her honor and her memory.
And, and we shall. On the record, I want to, are there any more adjourning motions? Okay, on the record, I want to say to the city attorney, during this solemn process that we go through when we are journeying in the, the memory of people, Mr. Spindler is in the back of the room playing his phone where it's making sounds of a baby crying. The sergeant had to go and tell him to stop that. So, I mean, the height of total disrespect. The height of an individual that doesn't care about anyone else, an individual that is, should be on some form of medication. Okay, so with that said, let us end this. No, you're interrupting now. So just stop it. So to end, end this on a positive note. Sergeants, would you go up to him and just keep him quiet? To end this meeting, Ms. Martinez, why don't we show the world this new... Well, Mom, come on. Let's end this by introducing us.
You want to say hello?